I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for July 23rd, 2024 at 5:16 PM. Attendance roll call.
Alder Person's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Schwer.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, July 19th, 2024.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. We have a long night tonight. Is there any items that you guys want to, do you want to get them through all tonight? Or is there anything you want to put off till the next meeting? All right. We'll keep it as is. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Approval of the minutes from the committee of the whole from June 3rd, 2024?
Move to approve.
Second.
One change I would recommend on there if somebody wants to make it under the discussion of elected officials, terms and salaries. The last paragraph right above communications and miscellaneous business. After discussion, it was agreed that mayor's salary would increase by $5,026 and $100 a month increase for the alderman to begin in January. I don't think that's what was said there.
It was supposed to be an annual.
Right. So somebody want to make the motion to amend the minutes?
Motion to amend?
Second.
In discussion, all those in favor of the motion to amend say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are amended. All those in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you. Going on the new business, discussion regarding mayor alderman's salary. Alderman Kubaki asked to have this put on front, put on this.
Only because I suggested five in the initial go around as a seed for discussion. I truly think the mayor's salary comparing to other communities in our area should go up by at least $10,000. That would put us in the ballpark of the other communities, on the low end of the scale, but certainly in the ballpark.
Are you talking with allowances up to total 85.5?
Correct.
Well, that's what I was thinking as well, in the mid eighties.
Well, you got two of them at 81 and 80, while the other one's got $5,000 on their 85, 81.
Were you referring with the allowance to be there or without? Because?
With the allowance.
To 85.5, with the allowance. So it basically be 82 for salary and 3,500 for allowance? Is that what you're thinking, Kevin?
Yes, yes.
That looks like that puts us pretty much right where everybody else is. New Berlin is higher. West Alice is about the same. Lockshaw is quite a bit higher.
Yeah, the only one is Nina.
That's really not even in our footprint.
Right.
Looks like most of these cities are bigger than us, or all of them are.
I think it's an important tool to track the best candidates we can, including our current mayor, of course.
So you're saying 85.5 in total with allowances?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I would second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Passes six to one. We'll put that on to a resolution in a future meeting. Fire department discussion. Alderman Kubaki had asked about that. And as we're having a growing community, one of the biggest concerns that we have out there right now, it's not, because we're served by volunteers, paid on call volunteers. It's not so much fires. We get more than, typically more than enough to show up for the fires. I don't know if it's the sexiness of showing up for a fire or, you know, the training that the volunteers have. But we are struggling, especially with the number of retirement homes that we have in this community now for rescue, especially during the day. So the fire department has made some adjustments to keep the department staffed during the day as much as they can. But, you know, we're getting, we're getting near the, you know, that model's lifespan, that we're going to have to make some adjustments over time. Fire department realizing this has applied for a grant for up to 12 full-time paramedic slash firefighters. That grant was submitted last month and they will find out how many, if any, they will receive somewhere between, they said, July and September. Most communities that I know of have applied for those grants, have gotten them. So let's just say we get those 12. The grant pays for the firefighters for two years. And then after that, we're responsible for it. So that would, in today's dollars, add about $1.2 million onto our budget. That's something we can absorb under our current budget with the revenue caps that we currently have. But what it does do is gives us time to go to the community through a referendum and ask them to increase our caps for the purposes of fire and rescue. The other alternative would be to turn it down and then go that route also going in the future. Now, just getting the grant, I think we're still going to have to have more discussions if, you know, what kind of model of a fire department do we want to have? Do we want to still maintain the existing that we have with paid, with a paid full-time department? Do we want to talk to other communities about mergers? There's a whole plethora of stuff that we still need to have a lot of discussions on. But the first step is let's see what kind of funding we can start with. Any questions in the meantime?
Yeah, I missed that. Who applied for the grant?
Test corners as our fire department.
Okay.
Applied for the grant. They did.
And that's through the state?
It's a federal grant.
It's a federal grant. Okay.
Now, the 12 personnel, would they be in the rescue area or both fire and rescue?
They would be joint, they'd be full paramedics, firefighters. So they would be trained on both.
Okay. Is it possible to have a hybrid model where we currently have our paid volunteers?
Yes. Yeah, we would still need to supplement, especially for fires and things, but the 12 would definitely take care of our rescue issues.
Have we reached out to the community to see if there's more volunteers out there?
The test corners has actually done a really nice job in the last couple of years of increasing their ranks quite a bit. They've worked, they're working very closely with the high school with getting kids that are interested in going into the fire services that are old enough to join the program and get their training. They've got a number of that way. They've gotten more firefighters on their own through other means. But yes, their numbers have gone up and they've gone, they've done a concerted recruiting effort and it's paid off. Not to the point where we're going to be able to keep that model going forever.
Now, what about privatizing the EMT side of it?
Privatizing EMTs.
I mean, there's like bell services and things like that.
Most places I know that privatize, it's more ambulance service and low, I mean, it's pretty much scoop them up and take them to the hospital. We're talking about having full paramedics. And I think for a community our size, that would be my recommendation.
I heard when, if somebody calls 911 for an ambulance, that cannot be shipped out. I heard that from somebody else. Is that correct or no?
That, what do you mean, that you can't outsource that?
Correct. If they call 911.
I'm not an expert in that. I don't, I do know in another community that I spend a lot of time at times, they, they do. That's all privatized up there, but could be because it's a town and they have different rules. I'm not sure.
Okay. My guess, a concern I have is in regards to that grant, is after it expires, you know, we're left on the hook for a lot more than what was anticipated.
Yep. As far as anticipated, as far as more than just?
The cost.
Well, I mean, obviously before, the, the cost of the grant would be, like I said, if you, in today's dollars, figure about $100,000 per firefighter. So that's about $1.2 million in just salaries. There's other costs that are going to be involved in that. For, you know, going forward, because your costs are going to go up. There'll need to be some modifications, I'm assuming to some of the firehouses for sleeping quarters. They've done some already. But yes, it's, there are more costs.
So salary includes benefits?
Yes.
Pension, everything?
That's my estimate, yeah.
All expenses, but okay.
But then you're going to need more vehicles and?
Right.
Yeah.
But then you have, you do have to keep them on after two years and?
Exactly. Or you got to return the grant.
Okay.
So. We haven't accepted anything. We've just applied. This is more of an update of where we're at. So lots of more, lots more talk has to go on, so.
Did we look into the private side of the EMT?
We can look at that.
I mean, we should look at all the options.
I think there's other options to look at as well, that we would be, you know, possibly looking at other communities and doing a joint fire department, especially with the state's innovation fund they have right now, where they'll cover 30% of, if you do something jointly with another community. As soon as they have the rules written on this, they're still working on that, but there's an innovative grant, innovation grant with, there's a lot of money. And I don't remember the exact amount, but that was passed in the last state budget. So if we do something jointly with, say, New Berlin and there is at least a 10% savings, the state will pick up 30% of the actual operating cost of that, that joint venture for three years. So that's quite a bit of money also, and it's an encouragement to do it. I mean, not only just from the savings of, we should be looking at savings that we do when we can do some jointly. But it's even more of a care to do that. So there's lots of things to be, to look at besides.
Yeah, that's what I like to see, all the options spelled out in front of us.
And we very well plan to do that.
Yeah, I would think there is enough surrounding communities that might be and hopefully interested in doing a joint venture.
And that's, I mean, I do work, I do network quite strongly with the other communities that, those are discussions that we would definitely bring up.
As far as there any cost to us taking over anything?
Taking what?
Taking anything over. Is there any cost to the city? I mean, I think when it was broken apart as a volunteer, there was a contract involved with that.
Correct. And, and how this would move forward is yet to be determined. All I'm bringing forward today is that we, that they applied for this grant. We accept it, you know, what the consequences would be that we would need to fund those going forward.
Well, that, but as far as them coming to us, we're not going to them to take it over.
Well, we're not, we're not saying we're necessarily going to be taking it over yet. It still could, we still could operate under the same model we have.
I just want to, I'm just, what I'm asking, is there any cost? I mean, because when it went to volunteer for them to come back, if we asked, we would have to?
I think it's too premature to have any of those answers yet.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Rob. I think what Rob is getting to is if we would take it over, we'd have to buy back the fire stations, the fire engines, everything that we?
Well, we purchased the fire engines. We'd have to purchase the stations.
But they're not the city's.
expense there.
No, I don't think it's the city's fire engines, even though we, we purchase them. I don't think it's the city's fire engine.
Yeah, and we'd have to dive hard.
Okay, I just want to bring these up.
I think the equipment is ours.
So is there any cost involved in us taking it, if it comes to that point?
I can get you those answers.
I could be wrong on that. I thought it was titled in.
I just like to have all the facts in front of me.
So we're not asking for anything today. We're just letting you know where they're at.
So is there a target date that the fire or whoever came to you, whatever side of it, is looking at?
They're, they will hear from the grant by September. And then we'll, once we find out where that's at, we would be coming forward to talk about the next steps. Any other questions? All right. Next item. Yeah. All right. We're going to have to adjourn for a moment, go to the big lake for their annual meeting, and then we're going to pop back to committee of the hall. So I'll put this, I'll put the committee hall in recess. We're going to go back to the committee of the hall. I'm bringing it back to the floor. We are at discussion of the road, actually, discussion of the road program. Scott and Ryan.
All right. Yep, I'm not on here, but, yeah, thanks. So we've had several talks about the road program. Alder Person and Kubaki asked us to kind of give you a little bit more on cost. So we've been kind of putting this together for, for quite a bit. So just to kind of give a little step back, because we have some new people here who, who weren't involved really with the first one. Back in 2023, we reached out to all these municipalities to kind of figure out what they spent on the road program budget and how many miles that, that we maintain and they maintain. As you can see, we are one of the lowest ones. We're only about 750,000, but we maintain 152 miles of roads. We're not the only one that's doing this. The city of Brookfield reached out to us about a month ago. They're going through the same exercise because they're running into the same issues that we are. And as we kind of go down, everyone's asking like, what does this mean, life cycle? So Alder Person Terrance asked this question, and this was probably about six to nine months ago. If we were trying to get 20 years out of life of roads, what are we usually doing? Well, the city of Mesquite goes averaging about 2.26 miles per year in our road program from 2019 to 2023. And this number goes up and down with inflation, larger amounts of undercutting, full depth and wider roads. In 2024, we're less than two, two miles, because we just finished that. We're not going to get two miles even. Just because of some undercutting and some other things. So therefore, currently, we're about 67.3 years touching a road. Now, I'm not going to lie and try to say that we should shoot for 20 years. It's not going to happen. But we, we kind of got it to a little bit better. And that's kind of like what the talk about this is. So kind of going down, just to kind of give you a cost. So, one second, I'll go to this one first. What we do is re-rate our roads every year, okay? Every two years. And this is how the pay rating is. One is the worst, 10 is the best. As you can see, from one to four, we have 65 miles worth of our roads are four or less right now. And about 87 of them are five to 10. So we're, we're, we're running into issues pretty quickly. Now, some of them might maintain and stay at a four or three, but that depends on weather, depends on truck traffic. But we have a large amount of roads that are coming that we need to be, get ready to start fixing.
Yeah, I would say that's pretty broad there, five to 10.
Yeah.
If you start talking fives and sixes, you're going to see a whole new percentage instead of 87%.
And, and this is, what you're, what you're kind of seeing too is if you start seeing the fives and sixes, they're, they're going to, exactly, they're coming. So how we try to give you a cost, an idea of what we do, is we did quickly, we looked at all the roads rated five or less, and then we looked at all the roads rated four or less and three or less. We used 5% inflation. We figured out $121 price per linear foot. We included construction contingency, engineering inspection costs included, and we did full payment removal. Why we did full payment removal is once we start getting this bad, mill and overlays aren't going to cut it much anymore. So kind of giving you the worst case scenario, okay? So let's look at what we spend right now. If we spend right now at 750 and we start doing three or less, five or less, we start going down. In three or less, about 35 years, we'll get it.
In the meantime, all the other roads are threes or less.
Yep. We won't ever meet, in 75 years, we won't get all the five for our current budget of 750. You asked us to look at 2 million. It's getting better. You can kind of see three or less, we hit them in year eight. We hit four or less in 20 years. And going all the way down, still don't get it in 75 years. And again, we're just using the average inflation, kind of, again, best case scenario from our last couple of years. 2.5, a little bit better, get to the six years, 15 years. And we're starting in 75, still don't have it.
Scott, how many, how many miles of roads are we capable of doing in any one given year? How much money?
Like we said, we're averaging about 2.26.
But what are we capable of doing? I mean, if, if we're capable of, of doing 10 miles of roads?
Best case scenario?
About the same.
About the same.
We're to the point now to where every other year, we would do two-inch mill and overlays. We get on the curb and gutter areas and use our LREP program, which is reimbursement fund. The subdivisions that we would go into where we could get away with a two-inch mill and overlay, which we found out in Lake Meadows a couple of years, is we're, we're falling so far behind that we have to do full-depth removals. And we can go through and do a proof roll, which we go through with a loaded truck, walk behind it. I was showing you we stopped out that day. You can hope for the best, but you have to plan for the worst. And that's what we're running into. We're just, we keep on falling behind. And you see these numbers up here. And the four or less, say we get to it in 12 to 13 years, well, those fives and sixes are going to be fours. And then seven and eights are going to keep on falling behind. Now, what we've changed, and I would say in the last five years, is with our crack ceiling program and maintenance on my staff's end is we're keeping our sixes and sevens and eights. We're maintaining that. We're holding them true by doing that extra maintenance. And we're going to go heavier this year. It's just we have to get those fours taken care of and below.
So the only way to realistically do this is to jab out a good portion of this, or the majority of it?
Yeah, I mean.
And it's all jabbed out now. I mean, we, we outsourced all our roads right now.
But that brings back to what are we capable of doing? I mean, by, by our own maintenance and by jobbing things out, how many miles of roads is it feasible for the city to do in any one given year?
Well, contractor, if you make the contract as big as you want, contractors will come and do as much as they want.
But you, but you've got some work involved with that too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, realistically, can we do 10 miles of road in a year or 20 miles of road in a year?
I would say in the seven to 10 miles, realistically, within the season, asking a contractor to fulfill that along with doing other communities, DOT work, everything else.
Sure. And what would the cost of that be generally?
I guess if you want full depth, that are $121 per?
Linear foot?
Per linear foot.
With engineering, construction costs?
Yeah. Depending, you get into some subdivisions where we have to put more of the infrastructure in just to maintain.
Sure.
You get into where we are currently and we're, you know, in a soup mass right now.
Well, the one you took me through was a soup mass.
Yeah, right, yeah. And that's where we're falling behind. I mean, you have those older subdivisions that were put in and then they weren't really maintained up until sewers came through in the eighties, and then they kind of rebuilt the roads. And not much was put into what's underneath it. It's kind of, let's go over the top of it and keep going.
Okay.
Seven, six.
So 50,000, am I doing this math correct here? I'm trying to think.
I have it on TV.
I know. So if you got, how much is a square foot or how much is a linear foot?
121 with construction cost.
How much is it per mile? Is that what you want? How much per mile?
Yep.
How much is that per mile? Do you guys know that?
Was it 5,280 feet, linear feet per mile?
Yeah.
So that's a full width. When you talk linear feet, you're talking full width.
Full width, full depth, worst case scenario, EBS, which is activation below subgrade.
All right, so we're going to, what, $6 million?
You want us to do the math?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, is that right? The other thing too is you got to remember, when we look at linear miles of road, if you go down by Alderman and go Champions Village, there's some that it's like almost four lanes of pavement there. We'll never get out of that subdivision. Some of these are just two lanes of pavement. If you go down there, it's, it's unbelievable how wide that pavement is. I mean, you're, you're stuck. And that doesn't show that. We just do linear, like a mile. We don't do, you know, how much width.
Actually, on our heat map, we have by subdivision, just worst case scenario. Just to put in perspective, you have like a quiet wood subdivision between Janesville Woods Road, Martin Drive turns into quiet wood, comes all the way through. That was put in in 2001, I believe. I believe that's already a four. And we have just the cost broken down for that, kind of really shows on the heat map right now.
What are we looking at here, Scott?
This is everything from five and less. So you can see like, it's all over. You got up here.
I think there's a key on the bottom.
Yep, down here. But these are rated five and less. So that's kind of like the big areas that we're talking about. So.
Well, there's also, I mean, not only the, how many miles a year we can do, how much, we're going to be tearing up roads in the community. You got to be careful of how much roads are under construction at one time.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get at is feasibly, how much road can we do? And how does that relate to our tax base and our taxpayers? If we can do 10 miles of road a year and 10 miles of road costs us $7 million and we bond for that $7 million, what does that result in a cost to the taxpayer? That's what I'm getting at.
And you guys are prorating this every two years. So is that staying pretty accurate? Some of these roads are, I mean, some of the roads in my area are way past 20 years, 25, 28 years. And then you got these other ones that were put in improperly that you're going to redo again already.
The five graph is going to flip the next time we rate.
What's that?
The fives are going to turn into fours. A lot of them are pretty close.
What you're just doing is every two years, right?
Yeah, and that's falling state.
We do internally every year, but
Oh, okay.
we have to submit every two.
Okay, gotcha.
And, and it's going to vary too, truck traffic, it's going to vary weather.
And there's more truck traffic now than ever with all the deliveries from everybody.
Yep, I think.
The quiet dead end cul-de-sacs are full of trucks every day.
I think you might see a change with truck traffic. I think you might see a change with EV vehicles, the weight on your standard EV vehicles. We got to be more cautious about. Some of them might be over 10,000 pounds, which is our, our standard rating. The other thing too, you know.
Is that a standard rating pretty much everywhere? 10,000 pounds in every community?
Yeah, Franklin actually just, Franklin actually just adopted what we're doing. New Berlin is pretty close to the same.
They were, they were higher before?
Uh, lower.
Oh, they were lower?
Yeah. And it's still, it's the shortest route possible, but if you, you have a truck coming down Marlin every day and they have to go serve a restaurant off of Woods Road, Bass's Bay or whatever.
Right, right.
They take the shortest route possible. Marlin, we know is built to certain standards. Driving down, you know, just a cut-through street is not. That's why like as we do these, we're going to, we build them all the same way. They're built and engineered the right way, but we never know what we're going to run into moving forward. We don't know. We, we kind of follow development. We know no development's going to chase on one side of the city because of sewer and water. So we're not going to service a road that is maybe a mile and a half instead of three. We can go take care of a mile and a half of road when it services 10 people compared to 40 people. Subdivision we're in right now, it's the same scenario.
So earlier, Kevin brought up what we're capable of doing. Were we talking what we're capable of doing with current dollars? I, I was confused on what we were going with that.
He's talking about his construction schedule.
But you said we're capable of doing this. Is that at current dollars?
No. At current dollars, we didn't even get, make two miles this year.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make.
It was more of like, we have to do, like we replace culverts along the way. We have to do, like, there's a lot of work that we have to do. We do all the restoration work to save money. Are his crews able to do seven to 10 miles of work, prepping, making sure all the sanitary sewer, whatever is utilities are all set? And then for these guys to come in and? Yeah.
And also get it done during construction season. We don't want to open a road up and all of a sudden it's November and we can't close it up, so.
So again, back to the numbers. If we can do 10 miles of road a year between engineering, between scheduling and all the other things it takes, and it costs us a buck 21 a square foot, worst case, we're looking at about $7 million a year to take care of 10 years of roads. Given that our roads don't degrade in that period of time, it's going to take us 10 years to, or seven years, I'm sorry, to, to address those roads that are fours or less. So how do we start this process? It, it seems that we need to do something at this point and in the future and every given year until we can get these roads into sixes. Is that a reasonable number?
Fives are maintainable. After fives, I don't, I don't crack seal them. We, we maintain, we spot patch, but it, you're, for how much it takes to take care of that, you, we burn up a lot through our operating budget as far as what, what I can take care of. I can go into a six and a seven and an eight, I can maintain that, and I can get twice the mileage out of it maintaining it.
So if, if in our operating budget, you can maintain? So if, if in our operating budget, you can maintain those, those better quality streets and through a capital budget, we can do the.
Road program.
The, the road program.
Correct.
It's going to take us 10 years. It's going to be painful.
No.
But it's going to be done.
And I don't think we're asking for the full lump sum, but we need a change because I, it's going to get to a point where all of a sudden it's going to be, hey, this road's unfixable and.
All we're doing is pushing it down the road.
Correct, and we have.
Bad, bad example, but.
It, it's a number one thing that we get calls about, you guys get calls about. Um, clear as day, we're just, we're only spending 750,000 on 152. Franklin spends 1.5 on 152 miles. We, we just, we're not keeping up. That's, that's just the bottom.
We do have an extra million we put in and I see in the budget and I thought it was every other year.
It's every three years.
And I see every three years in the budget, but I, I thought we had every, I thought we were doing that every other year.
Nope, it's always been every three years and then we only got it.
We just started that.
We just started. I only got it.
We've pounded on this for a while.
Yeah, I only got it for one year, you know.
So, so I, I guess this discussion kind of sets a priority of tax dollars, how they should be spent in Meskego, unless I'm wrong, unless you guys have a better idea where it should be spent. Uh, other than what we're doing currently with budget and increased costs and everything. And unfortunately, right now with the roads, uh, price of oil is up and again, it's going up right now. Uh, which means the cost of asphalt is going to go up. Um, and labor's not going down, so this is only going to get worse. But I just want to point that out that if we want to talk about where we want to spend our tax dollars, which is right in front of me right now, I think we've got to get real serious in the looking at what's in this budget and what we need to do and where we want to go. So.
Yeah, and I, I don't think anyone's going to argue with you on that. That's why we're talking about it today. I think we're all on the same page on that.
I've been bringing this over a long time, so I'm just.
So.
Bringing it in front of everybody.
What I, what I would suggest at this point is to, we can work with finance and have Sharon come back with different scenarios. If we borrow, you know, 2 million, three, four different things, different amounts, or we spend, I should say spent. And look at how we can pay for it. Can we do a combination of existing operating landfill borrowing and how that would work? And then we can come back to the council and let you guys decide which route you want to go on that. Because I can tell you right now, there's not an extra $2 million in our budget just to pull out of operating for this. So it's going to be, we're going to have to find a new way of paying for this. I'm, I'm uncomfortable of us sitting up here and saying, okay, let's spend $3 million on this going forward without having finance.
Well, how do we, how do we come up with the extra million every, every three years too? I mean, we did it last time, but how do we keep coming up with that extra million? You know what I mean?
Sometimes we get lucky and we get a good land year, landfill year. It's not sustainable to automatically assume that we're going to have these extra influxes of revenue. We had extra revenue. So, so I get, yeah, revenue sharing jumping up or whatever, you know. I think we need to look at a long-term sustainable plan, but it's something as Scott's bringing up, you know, we've all talked about, we can't keep kicking this down the road. And I don't think I'm preaching, I'm preaching to the choir here. I know this. You, you guys all understand this.
Yeah, I just have a question for clarification, like Hillendale, what's going on in my district? I mean, that's a completely redoing.
Yep.
I mean, that's got to be more than the 700.
Oh, yeah, but that's a separate capital project. It's, it's not related to the road program. We would not do what we're doing on Hillendale as part of the road program.
Didn't we get a grant or some kind of money?
We're using ARP funds.
Was that?
ARP funds for that. So.
Okay, okay. So the $750,000 in the budget just goes for what, like potholes and light, light resurf- I mean, it's not redoing.
It's, it's a full, it's not full reconstruction, but it's, our road program is usually a, a full asphalt removal and full pavement replacement.
So last year we did some subdivisions in Alderman Wolves District on Kipling, was it?
Yeah, we did Kipling.
That was.
This year we're doing it in Alderman Hamels District in Glenwood subdivision.
The main, main thorough roads are the first ones to be done.
You know, it's just, if you go through, our subdivision was done probably 10, 15 years ago, but you know, it's, it, it's literally going through the subdivision and in most cases resurfacing, but if we go to the resurface and we find out the under carriage of the road needs to be rebuilt, then we get, we have to rebuild that up and we get less roads done that this year. Then less roads done that year like we are this year in Glenwood.
All right, I have another question, maybe stupid question, but what about like, is there any, can we use less salt? Are there any other things we can do on roads to help keep their life longer of any other?
We can maintain what we have now that's good by doing our, our practices that we've changed in the last five and six years, but um, you're not going to stop truck traffic. You're not going to stop the amount of vehicles that come in. Uh, we have a, a pretty good maintenance program right now to maintain the sixes and sevens, but the roads that are twos and threes, I mean, some of them are over 45 years old. I mean, it's.
Right.
It's, we're just past that point.
I think the truck thing is the biggest thing. Whenever you design roads, it's all about the truck. We, we have everything signed. We have a really good kind of police stopping trucks in the wrong places.
We've added that in nicely.
Yeah. The thing is though, you still have buses, you still have snowplow trucks, you still have garbage trucks. You, you, we, we still need those trucks in order to do things.
Services, yeah, services.
Yeah, so.
I have a comment. Um, we have a nice trail system and I, I, I think you guys ride that as well and, and you can see that there's starting to be some spots in the trail and I've heard no, no talk about over the years since we put trails in about maintenance. And when we started putting these trails in, I was one of the first people to start saying, well, where's the budget for the maintenance on these trails? And it never came, it never came up. And as we're talking roads, we're going to have to start talking trails. Now you're talking more money again. Uh, right now would be the time to start fixing some of these trails because you're starting to get the cracks in there and you can, you can patch some of them. We wait longer, you're going to have more grass growing in some of those cracks than you do in the streets. It's not as, it's not as heavily trafficked, you know, but, but there's got to be a plan for that as well as where I'm headed.
Well, in this discussion, what, what I'd like, what I'd like to see is to attack the roads that need to be attacked in a reasonable period of time. I don't know what that reasonable period of time is. It's over a five-year span or a 10-year span. Because again, it seems to me that the $7 million number keeps coming up if we want to take care of the 65 miles of trails in a 10-year period of time. It's an expensive proposition, um, given today's interest rates, you know, I'd like to see what a bond ladder would cost over a period of time to at least let us achieve 50% of that goal.
Well, and I kind of feel like just from the answers here, they don't even know till they get into these roads sometimes, what the real cost is going to be.
We gave our, we gave our best test with a full payment removal and we gave our best estimate with a 5%, 5.1% inflation rate. We give our best with a construction contingency. I mean, engineers were pretty darn conservative by showing these numbers. It, it, I mean, we are, that's, that's our nature. That's, that's how we are, um, looking at this. Do we think, the best thing is too, is as we get into it and start doing roads, if we do more in one year, we can adjust this Excel spreadsheet that we did. I mean, that's the thing. This is an ever-growing Excel spreadsheet. I can always make adjustments. Is there the fact that you have EBS? Without a doubt. I mean, besides the last two years, the years before, we've been really lucky and we haven't had really much EBS. So we've been able to increase that number. So again, you're right. Some, sometimes when we open a road, we are going to have luck and sometimes we don't. Other times we're going to have high inflation that's higher than 5.1 or other years, we're going to have lower inflation. You know, it's supposed to all even out technically when you start doing this. But I think we did a pretty good job of, we take borings every time we do a road program. We kind of know how thick the asphalt is. We kind of know what it looks like underneath it. We do the best that we can. So we, we're not, I guess, too surprised. We kind of like, yeah, that's going to be EBS right there. We, we, we have a pretty good understanding of, of what's going on out there. It, it really comes down to cost. We just, we don't have enough money, um, to, to do that.
Does the state have any, uh?
So we get.
Any money?
We do LREP every two years. We get about $70,000. We look to get grants all the time. Um, we look to do sewer pack, um, with, with funding. It's not that easy.
Yeah.
Um, LREP is consistent, 70,000. We just had an agricultural grant. We looked at it, we decided not because if we would have done it, they would have said, by the way, you have to give up your weight limitations. Well, why would we do a road and then say, by the way, you can ride whatever you want on it? So that didn't make sense for us. When we do sewer pack and go after it, I am competing in being rated with a road that's in City Milwaukee. I will never get enough points. I don't have multi-use. I don't have enough, um, trans people numbers. My roads aren't as bad as what they are in Milwaukee. You, you go to sewer pack, when we went in there to get the BIL, all that funding that Biden did, City Milwaukee, Milwaukee County walks shut.
And I, and I want to be clear because, you know, I've been asked this by constituents all the time of what about this bipartisan infrastructure bill that was supposed to help rebuild all our bridges and everything else? Yes, there's a lot of money that came into the state and it all went into the, the high urban areas and areas like Meskego, Brookfield, New Berlin. We show up at the meetings, we do the whole exercises, all the work, all the paperwork turn out and they're like, nope, Milwaukee gets it all. So that's where that money all went. So as far as being bipartisan, mostly.
We, we have applied. I mean, it's not like we're not applying or looking for as much as we can. We do it all the time. So.
Um, Scott, I have a question for planning purposes going forward. So the roads that we're doing today, are we getting 20 years out of them at least?
Yeah.
Okay, because I need to know that. I don't want to borrow 20 years for a road that's going to last 10.
Yeah. And I think, actually, I think some of them are doing better. If you look at some of the roads, like you say, what's better? Um, some of these roads around the lake, when you do it in one pass, which means you pour the whole thing in one pass without a seam in the middle, some of these look so good because the idea is the water never gets into it. If there's some roads that we were done and they look, they're nines and they remain nines for seven years I've been here. And it's because they can do it in one pass because it's the roads narrower. And, and you think, well, that makes little sense, but it does. There's no water that gets into that road. It can't find a crack in there. So it's very interesting. That road might last longer than we're assuming, you know? And every road's different, harder winter, less winter. So.
We've also changed the city standard as far as our pavement practices. It's where we used to do three passes, two, two and two for thickness. Now we do a four and a two. Knowing that that bottom layer, say in 20 years from now, 25 years, 30 years, hopefully we have to get into like a mallard reserve. It's set up for a two inch millon overlay to get back to how we used to go so we can get more miles out of it. Instead of having that third layer in there to where you get in there, water can get in there, it could separate, then you have to chase the next layer. And that's what we're running into in the, I guess, late, late to early nineties subdivisions that we're doing and, and even older.
Question for, um, just for discussion or for thought, and I'm not proposing this, so calm down. Um, if we had, if we decided we had a standard width of a road for throughout the city for like subdivisions for this, arteries for this, you know, a certain width. And went in and when we redo the roads, maybe make them smaller than, you know, for the ones that are extra wide, would we, what kind of, would there be a savings on it? Or would there be an initial cost and would, doesn't make sense to even look at that.
Yeah, we would look at road diets is the best way to, they call them there. For example, champions. Again, what you have to think of though is somehow you have to figure out your storm sewer inlets are still back. So how do you figure out how to do it? Also maybe do bump outs a little bit. We have to figure out how to do curb work with that. But again, when we are going through these, we are looking at them. There's a couple cul-de-sacs. They're absolutely huge. And can we make that middle part more of a green area so that, cut it out, make that grass that gives a place for snow plowing? And at the same time, it, it's gone around. Like those road diets of cul-de-sacs and maybe champions, we, 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 when we go through it, we start taking notes down and start looking at ideas of where we can do that. Um, so.
You could narrow those roads and turn, you could put one of those, um, with all the grass right up the middle. Right down the middle of that and they wouldn't care.
Yeah. So there's things that we are beginning to look at because again, the traffic's numbers aren't there. We're not, you're not getting huge traffic numbers. You're just, you know. But our roads are just kind of, they're beginning to fail. Um, a couple of other ideas that I looked at, you talked about bonding for the road. Some places just increase their annual road program, then you don't bond, but somehow you have to figure out the budget. Wheel tax is another one. Um, you start looking City Milwaukee, Milwaukee County, there's actually more communities that do wheel tax. I'm just throwing everyone out there. Road assessments, there are some communities that do road assessments. And the latest one that Walertosa tried to get passed is a transportation utility and I believe it's going to go to Wisconsin Supreme Court about that one. So. Transportation utility. So it's, it's the latest thing is everyone pays, um, a fee, including the city.
It's almost like our water. You pay a residential equivalent fee. So homes would pay, say $200 a year. Businesses based on the type of traffic they generate would pay an X amount of that. So they could pay 5X. I don't, I ultimately, I don't think they're ever going to make it through the court system. They've been sued and lost it pretty much every route, but number of communities are hell bent on doing it and moving forward with them. We're not one of them. So.
Yeah, and we're, Case, we're not the only one. Please, like, City of Brookfield, they're running the same one. They're just, that's just recent because we talk a lot because of where they are. Um, we're, we're not the only community. There was just an article in the June League of Municipalities that talked about local roads and how it's getting worse and worse and how to deal with it. So.
Is everyone okay with having us, uh, bring this back, um, with some options of different ways, different numbers, different options?
Absolutely.
I mean, we can talk to you to the nauseam tonight, but we're not.
But now just like, we're at 750 for this year, right? Because last year we did the extra million?
Uh, we haven't done the extra million for not last year, the year before.
The year before?
Next year is the next million.
Oh, and next year will be the extra million?
Uh, 2026.
2026. And next year's budget is an extra million. Yeah.
Okay. So we're at 750 right now.
Yep.
Correct. All right. Anything else you need us to bring back besides options?
Do whatever Kevin, you, you brought up, what you, is that what you're talking about, the options from what Kevin talked about?
Yes. Yeah, options for how much road we can do. And what's the cost? What are the different options for financing that?
For 10 miles. If you want to get an idea of what 10 miles would be.
If that's the optimal amount.
And what it would cost for tax base on that.
Right.
Okay.
But I think it will probably do is different dollar amounts and then we can tell you for that dollar amount, you get so many miles out of it.
Okay, got it.
All right. Um, we do have a public hearing for, um, on the council agenda. It's supposed to be at six. So again, I'm going to have to recess this and then we'll jump back to this after we run through council quickly. So we'll put this in recess at 6:20. All right, we're going to go back to the committee the whole. Hopefully get out of here tonight. All right, calling to order the committee the whole again, that was in recess at 7:55. We're continuing on with 2025 capital projects. Oh, sorry, I got a backup. Discussion on electric, election drop boxes. Um, so as you guys may or may not be aware that the, um, US, or not US, the state Supreme Court previously had deemed uh, election drop boxes illegal. So got rid of them all. The one we have in front's got stickers all over it. Don't drop ballots in here. We can't accept them. If they do, typically if they drop them in, we would just mail it back to the person that sent it correctly or what do we do with them?
If they put them in there?
Yeah.
Um, so it would be as if I found it on the sidewalk?
Yeah.
We have been mailing them back, but I think I'm going to change that now. I'm going to cut, but.
However, you, we, we didn't keep them in.
No, they, they have to recognize it's their ballot and then say that it's theirs and hand it to us.
Sure. So that was, um, what we had been doing in the past. Recently, the new state Supreme Court changed the law to say they're allowed again. So until the next one changes it back, we have a decision to make. It doesn't mean we're required to have them. Typically, this is the clerk's decision. Actually, it is the clerk's decision, but the clerk is appointed and not elected, so we can direct her to do what we want her to do. You're not taking away her authority, but I think this is one where I wanted all you guys to weigh in on because quite honestly, I don't really want to make the decision myself. I think you, we should all take ownership in this. So if we, we're, we're coming to you tonight to find out if you guys want to have the drop box. The one we have, the only one I would recommend doing, I mean, state law would allow and put us all over the city. I don't, I don't agree with that. If we're going to have any, we have one out front. We can delabel it. It's under video surveillance. It's allowed. It's up to you guys what you want to do.
If the clerk had the option of suggesting, which way would Madam Clerk suggest that we go?
Because we're bringing this to the council, I am joyous going to point out a few things that I would like to bring attention to all of you. Um, the first point is the chain of custody of those ballots that the guidance shows that as we're standing out at that box, we have to pull them out, we have to count them, we have to record them, we have to put them in a bag. The bag has to be sealed. We walk through the building, we get to into the clerk's office, we unseal the bag and then we have to record them into the program that we use. It's called WISVOTE. That's the statewide voter registration system. So. I want to look at the fact that we're standing out there grabbing 20, 30, 40, 50 ballots. And I just am not sure what I feel for the security out there. So that's just one of my thoughts. That chain of custody is so much that they're saying that I have to follow is very time consuming and I just don't think it's safe to have one woman or two women standing out there playing with ballots out there.
Now, if I understand correctly, those are just guidelines. Right?
Correct.
They're not enforceable and they're by each community. So I'm just saying, so these, these boxes are pretty much ungoverned as a whole. I just want to point out what I've read from the decision.
I wouldn't call them guidelines. There is.
But that's what they call them.
Well, they aren't always right. You know, there, there are, there's a rule, there's specifically a ruling from the state Supreme Court. I am not an attorney. We have one here that may be able to further define exactly what that ruling states. But, but, but one moment, but absent of what's defined in the ruling, then it goes to the State Elections Commission, which pretty much has the authority of law on them for what their rulings are. So there, we don't get to just interpret it ourselves. So they're not guidelines. There is actually a court ruling which.
It says you can have them. That's basically what it says. That's basically all it says.
But also says you don't have to. Correct.
That's a good word, discretionary. You can have them and enforce what you want to enforce on them.
And then speaking, I just reached out to six other communities in Waukesha County. And four of them, just smaller communities, Dela Field, McWanago, and I know that they're not the same size as us. Brookfield and Connaught. And out of those six, four have said no, two have said yes. Those two is the city of Brookfield and else that's close to us, I can't think off the top of my head. But I, I just wanted to get some feedback and some of the feedback I got from them and I just said, I just wanted a yes or no. And I would say out of those six, three of them have a concern that it's going to go back and then we're going to be back to where we were before. And I would say that I feel the residents in the city of Meskigo kind of have the hang of it right now. So it hasn't, I still do get some pushback, but I just think it's, it's working right now. So. Without the box.
I mean, if it's under the, it's not broke, don't fix it argument. I can tell you New Berlin is doing the same thing we're doing. The mayor kicked it to the council and they're going to let them decide because we're both chicken and don't want to decide this one. But I, I mean, if I had to, I think I'd probably, myself, I'd probably err on not having it.
I agree.
But I don't want to make that choice myself.
Well, it sounds like there's some safety concerns and it sounds like a redundancy issue and I'm not in favor of it.
So can, can, can we move to keep it as it is with no drop box?
I have a question.
Well, we're not making a motion here.
Well, no, but we're going to get a consensus from you.
Right, okay. So I just want to point that out.
Yeah, a question. How, how does the, the, the drop box ruling square with any laws on, on, on the books in Wisconsin for ballot harvesting?
Well, ballot harvesting is not something that has actually happened here in our community. That came to play in 2020 when I believe Madison was doing a ballot harvesting and it may have been Milwaukee. I'm not positive. So I don't know how that would actually come into play with us. There would be the opportunity that somebody could throw several ballots in there. And I'm not certain how we would handle that because that is not something that we've experienced here at the city of Meskigo.
I have a question, Carrie. Could I, as, let's just say I'm a citizen, resident of Meskigo. Could I, could I walk in and hand you a bag of 100 ballots?
I would not do that.
You, you would not accept, you would not accept it?
No, I would not.
Can you legally not?
I don't know if I legally, I would be very hesitant to that. I, the rule, okay, so if somebody comes into the office and they have a husband and a wife's ballot. So I walk in, I have my husband's ballot and I walk up and I say, I want to turn these in. Staff is instructed to ask, we've even got a little sheet of paper, are both of these your ballots? Well, obviously they're not. No, this is for my husband. Is your husband able, does your husband, is your husband disabled and needs assistance to bring that ballot back? And if the answer is yes, then we can accept it. So we actually put a little mark on it just in case that question were to ever come up. And I would say not even a half of a percent that happens with. So they say that, I mean, if somebody handed them to me, I don't know what I would do with that, to be honest with you. I haven't been approached with that, but, but you should.
If, if I can't bring you 100 ballots to just hand to you, then I don't think we should have a drop box. Because there's nothing to limit somebody from dropping in 50, 100 ballots on their own. If I can't bring them to you personally, why should we have it for a drop box?
All right, am I getting the consensus that we're not?
Make an emotion to keep it as it is with no election drop box.
I don't really need, I just want to get your consensus. We're not making a thing on it.
We'll go with what.
We'll just, we'll just keep, keep it as.
Our expert tells us what to do.
Yep.
Thank you. Now we can go on to. Yeah, yeah. There's no one screaming they wanted boxes. So. Now we can go on to 2025 capital projects, fund, but capital budget.
All right, here we go.
Already starts.
Yeah.
Anyone want to take a break?
I think.
It wouldn't be a bad idea.
We're good.
Just stand. Yeah.
All right, can we just take a two minute break? So, all right. Continuing on. Scott.
All right.
Oh, sorry, Scott.
All right, here we go. Uh, this is our yearly event where we go through all the capital items. All right, we're going to start.
What page are you going to start on or do you not know?
Page 63, parks.
There is no 63.
Last page.
Okay, yes, you're right. Take 63.
Okay, that's good. 62 and 63 are together. 62 shows like how the funding sources are. 63 gets into the details for the parks. All right, so what I'm going to do is give a highlight of everything of 2025 that's happening. And then we can have a discussion and then I can give you some ideas or thought processes as well on some things. All right, going down 2025, focusing most on the field, safety and everything. All those are standard maintenance except for baseball, Park Arthur, Field Four, which I'm sure everyone's thinking and want to discuss. That is a cost of $950,000. The, we're going to, the plan is to have a donation to the city of $400,000 from IMPRO, which we do have.
We have it already. Or we don't have the money, but we have the signed agreement.
We have the signed agreement for that. Okay?
So does that mean that it reduces 950 to?
550.
Correct.
Yeah, that is correct. All right. So if you look on page 62, it kind of shows you that where it shows you the total cost of all the parks and then other funding source that shows a $400,000 donation on that. Okay?
Wait, what? 400, 50, 62 you said?
Yeah. At least that's 62 is my page. If you go all the way down, you see it? It's just a funny, how they did the funny. 62 and 63 just go together. They just.
Oh, right there. Oh, I'm looking at totals instead of 2005. Okay.
No problem. Okay, the next one that we have.
So there's another donation coming in 27?
Potentially.
Okay, I don't, I just.
Yep, potentially for, yep, no problem. Potentially we could add one. Okay, just focusing on 2025, then we're down. Nothing with splash pad, nothing with parks this year, with tennis courts, pickleball courts, dog park, $2,000 maintenance. Our playground sense, $10,000, $10,000 for wood chips and our playground, that's our kind of annual cost. In there this year is Lake Denune boat launch. That's $150,000. That right now we're working on Boxhorn boat launch, but for the 2025 would be the Lake Denune one. Then going down, the other ones for the Moreland Park Pavilion, parking structures, that's 250 pavilion with bathrooms, water and sewer hookup. That was supposed to go last year and that did get moved to 2025.
What, which park was that you said?
Moreland Park.
Moreland Park where the skate park and dog park are and possibly the future pickleball courts.
And that was how much?
250,000 for water and sewer hookup. It's a pavilion with bathrooms out there. You see it? Second.
Oh, Moreland Park.
Yep. And then going down Old Town Hall, new tables and chairs to be used by rec program and historical society. $15,000 tables and chairs over there. And then 15,000 for replacement of rental kayaks and paddle boards over at Idyll Al. And for also our programs where we went out and do kayak trips. So ideas and suggestions, because it is a lot of money. The Moreland Park Pavilion bathrooms, water and sewer hookup. I would say if you wanted to push that, that would not be a problem. Maybe a nice ideal of if that ever gets done with pickleball courts in 2027, it might be nice to be done at the same time. The other thing too is the Lake Denune boat launch. I don't want to push it, but you could separate it. So you could do $15,000 next year and then the rest the following year. The reason why is I'm in the midst of trying to do it for Boxhorn and I will need four permits. I need a soil sample, dredging soil sample taken and I probably need a wetland report. And if I want to go and do a recreational, recreational grant, I need an engineered stamp plan of the boat ramp. And it's a lot of work just to try to do it, but if I have $15,000, I can take the soil sample, I can get the engineered stamp plans, I can get a wetland delineation report done. And then the following year, we can have it all in place. It's, it's just not easy to do, guys, all in one year. And it would still continue the process and I don't need any more money, just split it up in two years. It, it, just looking for ideas because Park Arthur Four is, it's a huge cost to the city. But just telling you that it's taken a while to get the boat launch.
So all of that, ooh, ooh, that's all. So all that would still be valid, the wetland delineation, everything that doesn't?
It's five years. The permits are like good for four or five years. It, it takes a while to get this work done.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is 15,000 will get the process started. That way you don't have to split it up and rush to get it done in the same year.
In the same year and then you just move 135 for the following year. And then that's when you actually do the work. The 15,000 really is just to get all the permits in place and make sure you're ready to go. I would probably have to pull four permits with the DNR to do this dredging work.
So that would, that would, that would cover the permits for the dredging and for?
Permits, wetland delineation report. I have to get a, it costs about two to four grand to get someone out there to take a dred sample to then send it over to the DNR for review. And stamp plans if I want to try to get for a boat launch.
You and I talked about that. I think you learned a lot in regards to.
Correct. Yes.
Involved it is. So with that being said, is Boxhorn going to be done this year before?
Yes, I am working my butt off. I am working.
It's a tight timeframe to do it all in one year.
Yes, it's, it's just tight to do all the permits, all the sampling and get all the work done in one year. It'd be nicer just to split it up in two years to do it.
I think that's a good idea, split it up into years.
It's, the work is still going to get done. It's just, yeah, so.
I don't have a problem with it. I know other people that will, but I won't.
I'm just trying to provide you ideas for cost savings.
So when that launch is done, what's, is it going to be like usable compared to what we have now? I mean, can I, could I launch an 18 foot boat on it?
Right now you can't.
You never could.
You can launch it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to be dredged and we're going to cut, cut cactails back. That was the plan of looking at it.
It's also going to allow us to turn it a little bit, make it more, I guess, fisherman friendly. Right now with the way the channel comes in that fills the lake, it is lined up directly. It kind of comes in on an angle and it's constantly eroding. And depending on the water levels, there's times where the road so much that it actually raises the launch up to where just a guy in a little small 14 foot jumbo can't even launch and get out there.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm trying to point out that if you make the lake more accessible, they get used. And not sure what your constituents feel about that. Not that we want to have a private lake for them, but.
No, but, but I think most lake residents would like to have an option of having a launch other than the non-public, non-private, who knows who owns the launch, launch that we have.
Okay.
The resident I received a call about in regards to.
Microphone, microphone.
The resident I received a call about, about Boxhorn also mentioned Lake Denune. He couldn't even get his boat in there. It's 16, 17 foot aluminum craft.
Lake Denune's by and large been a private lake for years and.
What has, Lake Denune you said?
Lake Denune has been, yes. And I have no problem making it more accessible, but I just want to make sure that you are aware of the consequences on that.
Is that everything you wanted to go over?
That's everything just for the parks related to 2025. I think that what you're seeing, just to make a couple of notes, 2027, one of your big things. The pickleball people came and their goal is to raise about a half a million dollars and they want to do a 16 court pickleball complex. They're raising the funds right now. They're trying to do their best. I throw it in there and I think it was brought once before to your committee. So I just put in there as a, as an earmark of 2027 to perform that work. When I try to look at this stuff, I try to space it out evenly. Next year, our big one is going to be the splash pad at veterans. It was one of our top ones when we do our park survey and it was brought up several times by Terry Boyer when she was on the parks committee of like, when are we going to get this done? And so that's, that's our big project next year in 2027.
Any discussions on any?
Or 2026.
Any discussions on any individual items on here?
Actually.
I have a question about that, the splash pad. I mean, is that pricing still accurate on?
Oh yeah, I raised it up. I raised it up tremendously from last year.
Can't you water it down?
You went from 450 to 750.
Well, we need to make sure of the pavilion and we need to take care of the mechanicals. Now again, we did just our first run of the design. Now we're getting into the nitty gritty. So I, I want to make sure that you see it so that you know that this is coming. Could it be less? Yeah, we might be, make the splash pad more just a concrete and not a lot of kind of features on it. But I have to put the mechanicals somewhere and the only place you can find it is probably something, doing something with the pavilion out there.
Is there any municipality that has one that you're modeling this after or?
We look at a lot of them. Like for example, Sussex has a very one that's in detailed. It's, it's probably a bigger design. Village of Miami Falls just put one in, very simple, just concrete. It's connected right to next to the park. It looks very much how we might set it up when we have the new veterans playground. I kind of like it with the pavilion there. Walertosa has a simple one in Hart Park, very simple, right by the cabana there. Old Creek, even just in their little area there, it just shoots water up, you know, kind of simple. Summer Fest grounds just have the simple one that's shooting up. You can get them as ornate or as simple as you want. We're just beginning to get what it is. I think we're looking for about 2,600 square feet.
Think, think simple.
Yeah.
And, and also too, simple for us means less maintenance for us.
Well, that was going to be my next question. What kind of ongoing maintenance is?
Well, again, we try to make it as simple as possible. Elm Grove just put one in two years ago as well. So.
They, they are one of the most used facilities in any community they're in. I mean, it's, these kids are blue out there. They're in like 50 degree water and they're turning blue and they're just having, with a smile on their face.
And how this also would be manned is this, if you go to it, you hit a button, it turns it on. At a certain time, it's off during the rest of the time period. It's just kids run it, you know, it's very, you don't need a person there to be watching them.
We don't need a lifeguard on duty?
No.
Yeah.
Do they check your toes anymore?
I do have a question though.
Sure.
I'm looking at this whole thing and we just voted no, or the council voted no for two tennis courts. And I see no proposal through 2029 of what we're going to do with those two sites.
So for those two sites, right now, the tennis courts are, the nets aren't up. They're open for people if they want to shoot hoops, if they want to just use it. If it gets to the point where it gets really bad, we'll just remove the asphalt and make it green grass. That's in salvage the, the thing.
Yeah, because I know the poles like in Schmidt Park, I haven't been by the other one, are still up and you have people running around in there. I don't know, is that a safety hazard?
I don't think.
Balls out of them?
I mean, if, if you want to start us to start taking some stuff down, we can. We try to make it as, as much people could use them as.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, I don't know why we want to keep the poles up, you know, if we're not going to use it as a tennis court. And then, you know, the other question is, it's, it's a fenced in area. Would we remove all the fence? Would we remove all the fence? Or will we leave part of it up so you can like, you know, like a baseball diamond on the corner to keep people out of the drainage ditches?
At Schmidt, we'd probably leave the north fence up just because it goes down the drainage way.
Yeah.
Balls, whatever, kids signing down the hill, but we could leave it wide open. You could use that and.
I mean, I've seen people playing in it, even tennis right now. I see baseball, I see a lot of baseball in it right now, too.
I I have no problem taking the poles out.
Yeah, I think that's a probably a good idea. Um, the other, you know, because I don't see any any projects on here. As far as um, I know the asphalt isn't that bad. It's bad to play tennis on. Is there is it the cracks are just impossible to widen and and fill in so it's a nice asphalt piece or or well, we could get ten more years out of some asphalt in there or is that a a bad thing?
I I mean, I guess in the grand scheme of things, right now, if it's safe, I would take that, say, five thousand dollars and I'd take it on filling potholes or making the roads last a little bit longer, some more spot patching.
Yeah, take the poles out.
If it's not safe, we are we're absolutely make it safe, but as of right now, it's it's.
And I don't know about freedom, so whoever has freedom.
No, we we took we we talked to Alderman Decker earlier this week. There's no tennis courts. Do I see um, people shooting hoops? Yep. Do I see people taking their kid over, kind of riding around with little like bikes? Yeah.
See all kinds of stuff, yeah.
At at some point where it becomes really unsafe, we're going to just take everything out and make it back to grass. So.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so we can get something done there. It'd be nice at least uh, people gets supported supported somehow in that uh, park song. Because I don't see I don't see Smith on any anywhere on here for anything. So and that's through twenty nine, so looks like you guys have written it off.
I mean, well, again, you know, when we do maintenance on like the ten thousand dollars, if a player on equipment fails, that's what we go do. You know what I mean?
The wood chips and whatever.
Yeah, yeah, exactly right. So we're we're going to make sure that's maintained. If if something breaks.
Okay, my my main concern right now is what we're going to do with the tennis court. So people keep calling me saying, when is the net's going to go up?
Yeah, they're not going up this year.
So why don't we get rid of the polls then as he's asking, it'll stop some of the questions then.
What's that?
Get rid of the polls so that you don't.
And then do some patching if you can. Yeah, just make it make it uh, usable for a little kid not to trip in, you know, because that's what I see a lot of little kids in there now.
Yep, we can do that.
Question in regards to the kayaks and paddle boards, um, replacement, is there? What's wrong with the current ones?
Some fun facts for rentals at the park. We ran a snack shack there since twenty twenty one, so we do all of our our rental use at the park.
Can you pull the mic mic locally?
Yep, sorry about that. So we we purchased this equipment then with some COVID funds to actually get the snack shack open and and running. It's highly popular. Since twenty twenty one, we've had a total of where's that number at? Just over fourteen hundred rentals on kayaks.
And twenty one wasn't it was shut down, wasn't it?
No, we opened in twenty twenty one.
With COVID, it was twenty twenty?
We did, yeah.
We didn't shut down.
Yeah, once once everything was kind of up and running in July.
Oh, okay.
So over fourteen hundred rentals on those boats. They get a lot of wear and tear. We do a lot of patching of them. They actually get holes just with the high use. We have to replace some uh, over the past couple of years for how cheap we've been buying them. We're looking at just upgrading them a little bit more so they can last longer. We also use these for our kayak trips too. So, you know, when we have some pretty beat up kayaks with our trips, it's kind of a a bad look. It's nice to have some better ones when when people are paying for them.
And so when he's referring to the trips, it's the through the rec guide, you they have outings and.
Yeah, we we have several kayak outings throughout the season that people sign up for. We go on a big Mesquiko, Fox River. We'll do a little Mesquiko too. I run educational programs with kayaks as well down at Idyll Al Park. So, long story short, it's it's also a revenue revenue generator for us. Within the four years, those kayaks have been around twenty one thousand dollars over those four years. So we do get our money back on them.
Total replacement?
We would be looking at replacing our fleet. Yes, that's down there.
How many kayaks would you get for the fifteen grand and paddle boards?
Looking at prices now, you could, a kayak that would last you a while, when I say a while for us, five years maybe, these are lasting us not even three years right now. Anywhere between five to nine hundred dollars a kayak. Paddle boards, five hundred dollars. We have four. We'd be looking at like six, eight. So we would be increasing the fleet because we're constantly sold out on weekends. It's it's really popular.
Okay.
Now, not only that, but we would do like paddles, that's a cost, additional life jackets. They are in rough shape right now too. So it would be the full replacement of them.
Okay.
Yep.
What we do with the old ones then?
Depending upon how safe they are, I mean, we could salvage them. It's not like we would.
Are you not going to keep using any of them then?
I mean, we would keep them, but it would be a matter of like how long they would last, right?
Okay.
So it's not like we would sell them to anybody if they're in really bad shape.
And you'd and you'd be able to store? You'd have enough storage for the new ones and places to keep?
Yeah, we have we have storage down at the park now. I mean, we would probably remove the old ones. We would have the new ones there. If we had a surplus, I guess, we would we would have them stored somewhere else, you know.
And these are all landfill funds that we're using, right?
I believe.
Correct. Right now, almost everything is Sharon and I, depends what you guys all approve and don't approve. We'll go through that and bring it back to you guys, but right now everything's assuming landfill.
Okay.
Is all what?
Landfill.
Funds.
Oh, yeah, that's one of the I saw that over here, the landfill money on the other side. And and that's what you're looking for the splash splash pad as well as landfill money? That's a question I'm going to ask.
Um, I do not know because I'm not finance here.
Is that what you're thinking though?
Splash pad, that's next year really.
That's next year.
Yeah. We put it in there now, hoping that it is, but it really depends on annual revenue and what we build up those funds. So right now the landfill is doing great.
Well, I see there's a reduction in twenty six from one four to eight, eight hundred thousand back up to a billion one. So we're bouncing around, so.
Yeah.
And we, you know, we typically these going out to five years, they're they're kind of guestimates, so we do add and take things away, you know, as we go forward. Right now, this is a a view of what we think is going to happen, but something might pop up next year that's more important and we take something off and add something else, so. Alderman Decker, did you have a question? Okay. Anyone else have any specific ones you want to go over and discuss as well? So we're okay with what we've proposed. We're going to take the boat launch, uh, drop that down to fifteen thousand and move the one thirty five to twenty twenty six. And the pavilion and Moreland to move that to twenty twenty six. So.
Uh, twenty twenty seven.
Twenty twenty seven, I'm sorry.
Would be the Moreland Pavilion would be a better time to put do that.
Is that the consensus?
Yes, sir.
All right. What's the next page you want us on?
Okay, let us do page sixty one, five-year capital plan for conservation. So last year, we started our first five-year capital plan just for conservation to kind of tell everything that's going on. In twenty twenty five, um, we have a boat and the boat is okay. Uh, we got the boat back in, uh, I believe Tom told me nineteen ninety nine. But the motor needs to be replaced and we need a new trailer. So we've been using this boat a lot to remove bogs. And it's the motor is having a tough time and Tom said a couple cylinders are still not even working on it. So what we're looking for is more kind of like similar to a pro drive, surface drive motor, which will allow us to work in shallow areas and also help remove bogs that we're having trouble with. And the last couple of years, we've been removing a lot of bogs. Similar to with the big Mesquiko Lake when they talked about it, this is kind of like one of our big functions that we've been doing a lot now. But boat is fine. We just need a new trailer and the motor. So. That's all we're asking for in twenty twenty five. And then you see some of the things that we're looking for in twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight, just to kind of give you a snapshot.
And the funding source on this one would be conserva the conservation fund.
So your your estimate is twenty five thousand for the boat motor and trailer?
Motor and trailer, correct.
This is a this is one of those direct drive, uh, long prop with the.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Go devil.
Mud boat.
A mud boat, yeah, that's what I was looking. So had we had this in the past, would it have been a lot easier to move that bog out of the channel then that we've had?
Yeah, I mean, it you're constantly fighting the wind out there and the weather, but yes, I mean, more efficiently and just easier.
Okay.
On the equipment and the guys.
So what happens is when these bogs get removed, the wind comes to the west, they come in and Boxhorn and what's the other one that we?
Their their boat launch.
Those two both get filled with bogs. And then we can try to grab as much as we can from the side, but some of them we have to push out or we have to push in or or take it out a little bit further. And it just seems to be happening a lot more. So. I think I would say Alderman Hamo would probably get the most calls and complaints um, from a couple of people with bogs. So.
Going on?
Okay, we are now going to start doing this kind of in order. Let's start on page thirty four, emergency exit upgrade.
Thirty four. At least that's what I heard. I want to trust my hearing. I just wanted to see what I heard, yeah.
All right, so what this is is when they designed this building, we have um, a little thing where there's, and I'll say it, there's emergency exit door, but there's no alarm there. So anyone can kind of walk through that door and so we need a way to kind of have a little bit more safety for our folks. So what we'd do is once you push that door, first thing alarm would go off. And then two, there would be magnets on certain doors, for example, I T, I believe, the fi the door to the finance and the mayor's office. And if someone would push in there, the magnets would release and these doors would shut, if I remember right. Is that is that about right?
Yeah.
And that would be a way that we could provide safety if someone got back into the back part of the of of the city hall area.
So this is just a, we're going to add this in.
Correct. So originally when this building was designed, they were going to have a crash bar and there were alarm sounds. Well, fire inspection came through and said, you don't have a secondary exit, which you have to have. Which I don't know how got past the architects, but they, well, the architects mainly, they're the ones that designed the building and they, uh, so that door, they put a sticker on it essentially saying to the bad guys, don't go, don't open this door. And that's all we have for security for the whole building because if you get in there, you can get pretty much anywhere except for the P D. And, uh, you know, we looked at a plot through, I mean, this is even, this is a clunky solution. It works. It's not my ideal one. I've looked at other parts of the building, like is there any way of putting a secondary exit in here, but you there's just the way it's designed, you can't. So this is the best we could come up with. If for some reason between now and January, come up with something better for the same amount or less, I would do it, but I feel uncomfortable, especially for the finance, for everyone in the building. I mean, even myself and Jeff, um, we've we've had some um, interesting people hanging around city hall the last couple of months um, that, you know, have been.
You don't work here, do you?
They, no, no, they don't work here, but they've been but they've been they've been making threats and everything else and we're we're in an unsecure area, you know. Right. Well, the court should still be open because that that goes through there, but right. So I we need to do something. It's unsafe in today's day and age, so. Any objections? All right, next.
All right, page thirty five. So this is banner replacement. We had this a couple of years ago. We just never got it done. I have to bring it back to you because I can't just keep carrying over capital. The mountain changed, nothing changed. Um, these are the banners that you see along Pioneer. You see some banners along Janesville along for the light poles. So basically, it's just me asking again to replace the banners that we have.
Okay.
How old are the banners you said?
Oh, they're not even up anymore.
Yeah.
No, they're they.
They're down.
Yeah, they we've had them up. We had them up for years, but they're still tethered.
Yeah.
Yeah, they 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 last, you know, maybe five years, you get out of them?
Yeah, if they went the first and second phase with Janesville. They went up with that. Um, the ones on Pioneer, when we did a light poles, we did Pioneer mid two thousands that it has a historic district on it and then down by um, Test Corners, it's the same thing.
Everyone okay? All right, next.
I'm just letting you know, page thirty six is our road program. This is one every three years that we did the extra million dollars. Nothing requested in twenty twenty five.
This that and that may change depending on what we discuss with you guys and bring back to you. So this this part might change yet.
Page thirty seven, uh, that just shows Candlewood subdivision. This is one that's going to need a little bit more work than road program. We keep moving it uh, down uh, sooner or later that it's going to be, we're going to need a full reconstruction on it. Similar to maybe what we did for Hillendale Road and Alderman Schrader's area. But just right now, I just got to put it in there for a place, kind of placing it.
Now, if we do come back with a plan, more robust plan, would that pull this out of that and would this be one of them that would come first?
We would look, if you guys came back with more money, whatever we're looking at, we're going to rechange, we're going to look at everything now. We're going to change how we look at things. And this might definitely come out and and will change how we approach things.
This is the one with the.
Tick, 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 tick. Yep. It's worse in wintertime. They put a fly ash in the road and summertime, it's it's okay, but like once it gets wintertime, it feels like you're tick, tick.
It's a feature.
Up and down, up and down, up and down.
Traffic calming.
It's wavy.
Yeah.
This was built on ash or something?
Yeah, it's built with fly ash. Fly ash is a byproduct of when you burn coal and they put it in.
They put it in the asphalt as a binder. But they 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 experiment with asphalt every year, but they're putting it in.
They also use it in Test Corners. We've since redone that and they've also used it in Moreland. We've since redone that. Candlewood is the last of that money saving try.
Um, next next one, moving to page thirty eight. Um, this is our our trucks that we do. So every year we request a little bit amount uh, for the trucks. Um, we have to increase it. We are not really getting any more deals and vehicles are going up rather quickly. Now.
Sure.
Sure.
So you'll see on page.
Forty.
Forty, I have in there a expensive lawnmower. And this is why I want to explain what we're going to do with it. I would forego our truck next year at ninety thousand to get, knowing that we'd be better served getting the grounds mass more. What this would do is this is a moor that would replace two moors that we acquired from parks in two thousand fifteen that have since been outdated. Yes, we still use them, but they are out of date and require a lot of maintenance and just not efficient. This would, not only would this replace two moors, it'd be replacing another seasonal. Not that I want to give away my seasonals, but what we can get done in a weekly basis, cutting our parks, this would also in the future alleviate some of our parks and boulevard contract that we currently bid out and hopefully relieve some of that cost on our operating budget every year where I could take over more of our green space with this piece of equipment than what we currently have now that serves the city.
So our contract up for landscaping, it's every two years. Right now Seabird has it. It'd be up starting again in twenty twenty five. They got to work on that one. It'll take a year to do this more in the contract in twenty twenty, the second part of that contract. We would work with the contractor and put in the contract saying we would take over one to three parks that currently we have someone cut. So one, we're trying to say we want this one more than the truck. And two, we feel that it'll start saving some money in our operation costs, definitely starting in twenty twenty six, because it'll take about a year to get this more, right?
Yeah, once ordered.
Isn't that why we we went to contracts to get away from the equipment and save money?
We have to replace the two equipments anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to replace with one, so are we going to need something else after that?
No.
No. And we we already cut half, you understand, when we contract out, we still cut a large portion of li of land. It's just that once we replace that, the moors are more efficient, we can take some of the stuff back.
So look at it like if we if we outsource forty hours of work and we keep ten. So now we can still do ten hours of work, but we only have to outsource thirty hours. Something like that, because we can get twice as much work done.
And we don't have to add employees then?
Actually, if anything, you'd be reducing a seasonal if anything.
Yeah.
Two moors to one, right?
Yeah, and currently what I'm doing, and I don't want to speak for Sharon, but what a seasonal costs us is a seasonal hole compared to full-time employee. Right now, I've been very fortunate that I either get um, retired former employees from other departments or from other communities that come in, they can operate on my bigger equipment, but at some point, I'm going to have to rely um, on full-time employees to take this equipment over. When I'm doing it, I don't want full-time employees cutting grass five days a week. I want them cutting grass two to three days a week. So as we do this, I can be more efficient and more efficient equipment and utilize my guys full-time. So as we do this, I can be more efficient in more efficient equipment and utilize my guys' full-time time wisely. Instead of relying on, I mean, they just don't build kids like they used to anymore, and that, it's hard to.
Still build them the same way.
They still build them the same way, there's not structured the same way. It, it's just gonna allow me, looking in the future, knowing that even that's gonna take me a year to get this lawnmower. As I move forward, I can throw one of my full-time guys on it for two days instead of four and still make up time. At the same time, alleviate some of that cost that we have for our current contract.
So Ryan, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You're just gonna move your, your uh equipment replacement schedule up a year then?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna flip-flop.
Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah, but then that leads me to the next question though, the uh three-quarter ton pickup is what year right now?
Is a two thousand and seven.
But it still looks new. Just kidding.
We, we, we have a great maintenance program, we actually, I did buy um a box off of Wisconsin Surplus to, you know, just so.
Would you keep that truck then?
Yeah, we would keep it, there is another one in the um, in the rotation that we would probably put on Wisconsin Surplus. And that would be a two thousand and three. So it'd be replacing one that we currently have, but just kinda moving down the line.
And as long as we're moving things, the half-ton is what year is that?
Um, the half-ton then would be kicked out to twenty-seven, correct?
So are you just shifting everything down?
What year is the truck?
Three-quarter.
No, the half, half-ton.
Oh, half-ton would be twenty-seven.
Yeah, but uh what uh year is?
No, no, the truck, the truck is made.
What year?
Yeah.
Uh, it would be two thousand and five or two thousand and six.
Okay.
Just a note for, if you, I think in the future, when you do these, just say what year truck you're replacing, just be helpful.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, cause we're not talking, you know, thirty thou- thirty thousand dollar trucks anymore, you know?
No, and actually, um, GM is the last one to do a government purchasing agreement. And Dodge and Ford opted out, and it sounds like GM is gonna be done shortly, also.
There were, the discount used to be so, so great that there's communities out there that would replace their trucks every year because they could sell the used one for more than they were paying for it, so every year they would just buy a new one.
Oh yeah, the prices keep going.
Yeah, and you'd see, you'd see a lot of municipal vehicles on auction, a lot of yellow ones, like City Milwaukee. Um, but now with this, I mean, we do get a government discount on the lawnmower, a pretty substantial one still. Um, but not, we're not gonna catch that on the trucks anymore.
Who's the lawnmower from?
Uh, it will be a Toro brand, it's either gonna be through Ryner's or I, this is where they have to be competitive, kinda like uh our um tips program, where they have to do a cooperative purchasing agreement, so.
Hey, if you put the year in the truck too, you should throw the miles on there, cause that's the other one, that's the other question I always ask is the miles.
Sure, and it's not with us, um, miles are definitely not gonna be a sticker shock. It's gonna be the hours on the motors, idling all the time.
But it's still nice to have a comparison to say.
We can do both, hours and miles.
Wait another year instead of, you know.
But I, we can do it, not a problem, just like, like Ryan cautioned, that you don't look at the miles, cause ten thousand miles on a, on a city used vehicle is like forty thousand miles on our car.
I understand.
I, I know you, I just reiterate for everyone.
Trucks, the trucks, trucks is pretty, some of them are easy, I mean, they're not, maybe the three-quarter ton is, you know, there's more work with them, but yeah. Okay, over one.
Okay, so that would take care of thirty-eight.
So we're taking, just to clarify, so we're, all the, on page thirty-eight, all the trucks were just pushing back a year?
Correct.
Every one of them?
Every one.
Okay.
So we're approving the mower.
Mower's, mower's gonna stay in twenty-five.
Mower's staying where it is on there, we're just clearing out ninety thousand.
And that's on page forty.
Everything here is moving out.
Okay, so this is how Christine did it, this is.
Alright, continuing?
Sure, on page thirty-nine, this is uh five thousand dollars each year we just um get for miscellaneous small equipment that we use. Um, any idea what we use it for, you, you have an idea that?
Stuff in the field, uh bigger purchases, cordless tools, generators, um, tools, I mean, just a shovel now is ridiculous. But it, it's, it's to outkeep outfitting and rotating. Um, when we go, example, when we go through our leaf collection program, we probably spend uh two thousand of this roughly on rakes. So it's, it kinda offsets that cost.
Questions? Alright, go on.
Page forty-one, um, this is where we moved our plow truck. We kept trying to doing one every year for operating, and then it kinda got cut. So what we're trying to do is do a plow truck um every other year, we don't have one for twenty-twenty-five. But just to s- show you that in twenty-twenty-six, it's about three hundred thousand dollars.
Do we still have the like year weight on them?
Yeah.
So when do we have to authorize this to do that?
We will be, there has been a verbal but non-binding.
They're okay with that?
They're okay with that right now, yes. And actually, the projected cost right now is cheaper than the one I got coming in this year, for whatever reason. But I'm not even gonna say, we're gonna leave this right where it is.
Alright, questions?
Do this, we, we get rid of the old truck, or are they still in pretty good shape or what?
As we have been growing as um a department and a city, we have been keeping them just because of the new emission restrictions that are coming. Um, no matter what truck you get, the emission restrictions, it sounds like in twenty-six, they're gonna throw more at it. We're having to send at least one truck a year, if not two, back to the dealer to reprogram, regen. Whatever comes with all the stuff they make us follow now. So um the oldest truck that we have right now in the fleet is a two thousand and five and two thousand and six. That's used, it's usually parked in the summer, um, it's used if we do concrete or asphalt, something, it has to get maybe more wear and tear on it. And then if we have a truck go down in the winter, right now, when we go, when we plow, it's everybody all out, it's every piece of equipment. I have two spares, so if one's at the dealership and one goes down in the middle of a snowstorm, we don't skip a beat. So right now, we're holding on to them, we're not sticking a lot of money into them, we're just maintaining with them. It's gonna come to a point where we would put it on Wisconsin Surplus and recoup some of that cost. It's just, as of right now, I'm holding on to them, because we don't have to play by the same rules with the older trucks that we do with the new ones.
And with the new subdivisions and stuff, we don't need to add anybody or anything? I mean, looking at that in the future?
As of right now, we're doing good.
Well.
Tight.
Yeah, well, we'll get in the, we'll get in the operating later, but there will, I'll just give you, we can't discuss, it's not on the agenda, but I'll just say it right here. We will be having a request for a change on one of your maintenance, the, the maintenance guys for the trucks.
Yeah.
We'll talk about that more then, but it's because we are, our fleet is growing and we are making these trucks last a lot longer.
Going down then, page forty-two, again, asphalt paper, that won't be till twenty-twenty-six, just to kinda give you an idea. Cold storage, looking at page forty-three, we just keep kicking that out, that's twenty-twenty-nine. Just a, you know, kinda bookmark, just to let you know that it potentially could come, depending on what happens with the whole PD, we don't know. Um, and remember too, Boxhorn has been, we're getting rid of Boxhorn this year.
Is it what?
Boxhorn, remember, last year that you told us to get rid of it, we're okay, it's, it's coming down, probably this year, we're gonna sell it on surplus. So that eliminates some more storage space as well for us.
And what do you, the land will just be empty there?
Yeah.
Green space.
Green space.
Yeah, we cut it as we go through every week.
Um, page forty-four, we have the replacement old, of the old salt shed. Again, that's kicked out to twenty-twenty-nine, is, as long as it's holding good, we're, we're doing pretty good.
That's a wood structure one?
That's an old salt shed.
It's the old salt shed, we have um sticking, we've done everything internally, and then we just did some work on the, our new so, well, it's not new. The bigger salt shed uh was put up in ninety-nine, uh, we did all the repairs in-house, just to make it last. I get inspected every year by the state, we have to follow certain guidelines, um, every year we are good. So we are gonna keep on maintaining the way we are, um, and just wait till we have to take care of that. Just, there's a lot of these big ticket items that are coming up, that we know, um, that we wanna make sure that we can maintain them internally without nickel and diming our operating budget.
So would you replace it in the same spot then?
Uh, it, it depends on our layout, we're gonna look at the whole thing, I work with Scott and Adam, because with cold storage also, we have to figure out where that's gonna go to. Um, take care of both my department and Tim's, so.
These are just kinda let you know, we're thinking about five-year plans, so it's not like a shock, like, okay, where did this come from? So, before we get to utilities, one thing that I wanna mention is with the parks. Park Arthur Field Four, um, why we're kinda coming earlier than later is in order to kinda save the money before we start going, before they start raising prices. We're gonna probably come back to you and get some type of signed agreement of saying, we can move forward with this because they can fit us in, starting this work in fall, but not take any money till twenty-twenty-five.
Correct.
So, why we're kinda approaching you is, if we start that price, if we don't start looking at this. If we started twenty-twenty-five, guys, that, that price isn't gonna hold true anymore, i- it's going up so quickly.
And the matching firms is confirmed, matching?
Yes, yeah, I've got, I've got the signed contract from Impro on that already.
This is the last field, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and there's so many, so many communities are turfing their fields now, following our lead on this. Um, that the companies that are doing it are, you know, they're getting backlogs, so they're, supply and demand, prices are going up and out of it. So, the sooner we do it, the, the more savings we're gonna have.
Alright. You guys ready to go to utilities?
Sure. Thanks, Ryan.
Yep.
So we're on page forty-five. You're there, meters?
Two hundred thousand?
Yep. So this is our, we're just gonna focus first on the water utility. Um, this is our request that we ask every year, about two hundred thousand dollars, um, as you can see, out for the next five years. This is for, as we see new construction and the increased number of water main, or water meter replacements that are necessary. So, we raised it up about what, three years ago, I think?
Three years ago, we got a hundred thousand, and now we raised it to two hundred thousand. We did, we have a lot of subdivisions now that we're doing at twenty years old. We used to go and pull the meters out, take them back to the shop and test them, it was just a pain for us and for the residents. So now we just go in, it's a half-hour job, we put a new meter in, they're good for another twenty years. So, and with, every year we're getting behind, just like the road program. So, three years ago, we bumped it up to two hundred thousand, and we've been pretty good at that, so.
So this, this money comes out of where?
Working capital from the utility, so it's, it's built into the rates.
Yeah, it's into the rates, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just saying that, so these, they, everybody else understands where the money's coming from. So it's not, it's not coming out of the tax?
The, the users, the people, so if you're not on the water, so if you have a well, you're not paying for this. If you have city water, your rates have, a part of your rate is to build up capital funds for um fixing and keeping up with pipes and meters and any other maintenance we need to do.
So this is water utility, utilities founded, you know, funded through the, both the rates and our water capacity assessment. Those are the two ways that we fu- we fund our water utility. Okay, moving on to page forty-six.
Actually, I should clarify, you're correct, most of, most of the replacement of things like that come out of the WCA.
Yeah.
Not the rates, but the hookup charges.
Yep. So, page forty-six, uh, this is our trucks that the utilities use. Um, so this is a crane truck, we get this one every twenty-five years, um, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then we're gonna split it between water and sewer, so a lot of things, we, we're able to split between water and sewer. And this is, for some of you who don't understand that, usually trucks, um, you'll see some safety equipment. We can split that between both the water utility and the sewer utility. So that's why, when I put on there, crane truck a hundred fifty thousand, and then you look, there's only seventy-five thousand underneath it. But that's why we put it, we're splitting it fifty-fifty between water and sewer utility.
Why the big jump from last year to this year? That's huge.
Our crane truck is a two thousand and one right now, and we've been pushing it off every year, every year, every year. So it is, it's pretty much falling apart right now.
And prices.
The budget last year was a hundred.
Yeah, so prices.
To get the service body right now, is you can ask, I mean, Ryan's going through the same thing we are. For the service body trucks, it's crazy with the price right now, just to get that. It's a, I mean, it's, our last tool truck is um two years old already now, and we had a hard time getting that. So this is a bigger crane truck, and it's got a, you know, it's a service body, that's the hardest thing to get right now.
Okay.
So it's an upgrade from the, the, the service bodies, upgrade from what we had on the budget for placeholder last year, that's what the cost difference is.
Correct, and it's just what, like Scott was saying before, the price of trucks are.
Escalation of cost, correct.
And if you look to going out twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I've, we had to raise all those prices for all the trucks that we see coming. You, you can see it clearly from last year, we're, inflation is just.
Our half-ton pickup truck that we just got was, we didn't even have enough budget for this year to get it. We had to grab money from somewhere else actually to get it, so it was, we'd always budget like forty-six thousand just for a half-ton pickup.
Sure.
And it's just, it's going through the roof.
Doesn't work anymore.
No.
Okay, alright.
Any questions? Moving on to page forty-seven, um, this is the relay water laterals in Weatherwood Court subdivision. Um, it's finally time, um, we've replaced most of them already, this would do the last of them.
There's three left to do, that's it.
So we probably won't use all the hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, just to let everyone know, that was a budget that we came up with three years ago. But since that timeframe, as they broke, we have gone out and repaired them. So once we do that though, next year in twenty-twenty-five, for sure, Weatherwood Court will be in our road program. If we cut up the road and everything like that, and it's all done, we're gonna go hit that right away with our road program cause the amount of cuts aren't in that road, and we, this will save it, rather than just having all these cuts in there, just to let you know.
Questions, comments? Alright, going in.
Moving on, um, our water tower painting schedules, so it's been really good. Um, our inspections were really good of all our water towers. So next year, all we really need to do is we need to spend seventeen thousand dollars on Hillendale Drive Reserve, Lake Meadows Reserve, Industrial Park and Commerce Drive, for just engineering inspection reports for all four. And then the twenty thousand is just to replace um the Hillendale Booster Roof, just needs to be replaced there. And then we kicked out uh Hillendale Tower full inside and outside painting uh to twenty-twenty-nine. So, that's probably a big change that you saw, because last year, I think we had that up a lot earlier. But when we do these inspection reports, we get a really good idea, so that's great for us, we're able to push that out a little bit longer. But as you can see, the twenty-twenty-nine cost, you're, you're at six hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, it's not a cheap venture to do.
And the Hillendale, that has not been touched since it was installed, so there's been nothing done to that water. Besides inspections, there's been no painting, um, besides us cleaning it. And then when Dixon comes in, Dixon Engineering comes in, they do the full-blown, they go in, they drain it down, they clean everything inside and out. Um, they did adhesion tests this year, I was with the engineer, and he was shocked how good it was holding up, so that's why we bumped everything back on that. So what they do now is they do an ROV, all they do is all of our towers, they'll take a little, they'll access it from the top. They'll take a little robot in there and they'll kinda look at the whole tower, and that's why it's gonna, you know, that's what's, that's all we're gonna be doing for twenty-twenty-five. So we, that's why you pushed everything back on that one.
Nice.
Questions, comments?
And Tim would be happy to give anyone tours of water towers, if anyone who hasn't seen one yet.
I know, I, I talked to you a little bit about it during our little interview. I'm not taking Jeff, but.
It, it's, it's good to do, to see the infrastructure that we have, so, just a side note there.
What if you're afraid of heights?
Then you shouldn't do it.
We won't take you.
You don't need to crawl it.
We don't, yeah, we don't take you up all the way top.
We just strap a parachute to you.
Some of the lift stations are pretty, I mean, you could stand down and, you know, thirty feet to the bottom, we won't take you in a well, but the, it's, it's pretty uh people drive past all these buildings, they don't even know what's there, and most of them look like houses.
Yeah, didn't we get an award for them?
Yeah, we got one, um, a well, it's, it's one of our.
Well thirteen.
Well thirteen, it's in a neighborhood, it's a picture, it's a house from the outside, you can tell, so. Moving on, um, safety equipment, page forty-nine. So this is again split between um our water and our sewer. So this is ten new self-containing breathing apparatus um for utility workers, and thirty thousand. And then we need a new trench box for our utility workers to make repairs on water and sewer laterals. So that'd be ten thousand and thirty thousand, be forty thousand, and that's split between water utility and sewer utility.
Questions?
That's equipment we use when we get to go in.
Confined space.
Confined space, so. Coming up, page fifty, uh, twenty-twenty-six, well, eight is planning to be abandoned. Uh, we'll double-check that if we need to or not, um, but right now it's slated for twenty-twenty-six. The other one, that's a new one on fifty-one, page fifty-one, and this one, again, uh, I believe we're splitting this one between water and sewer, yep. So our SCADA system, which is radio network replacement, they're in our wells, um, they're in our lift stations, our water towers. our water towers, um, we're going to slowly start repaint, uh, replacing those. Um, what those are, is those are, all send signals back to Tim's office, so that we monitor everything. We know, you know, lift station alarms, well alarms, um, so, we, we, we need to have this. I mean, this is something that we need to have, so. And again, it's split up between engineering costs and then equipment replacement. And again, I broke it up to sixteen sites on twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven has eighteen sites, and twenty, twenty-eight has eighteen sites.
Good. Excuse me, I should have asked this before on the other one, but I, I noticed on this one, sewer borrowing, where, where are they borrowing the money?
Where, oh, it depends what, things have changed a little bit in the last year, um, but typically we would, uh, issue bonds, um, so like Baird would sell bonds to the market, they would buy, and then, so it's a borrowing, either a ten or twenty year borrowing, depending what we decide for the life of the prop, the item we're purchasing. And in the case of, like, the water utility, the utilities borrowing, it's not the taxpayers in that one, it's the rate users that are doing the borrowing, so it doesn't impact your property taxes, it, it could possibly impact your rates. It depends on how much and what the rates are at the time.
Thank you.
And I believe Sharon, doesn't she do it every fall, she'll go over water rates and sewer rates, or you guys?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we try to do a simplified rate, um, uh, rate increase or, uh, at least analysis every year. There's two ways of doing it, you can do a full-blown, because we're, the, our rates for the water, for water are controlled by the PSC, so we can't arbitrarily just raise rates, they, you have to make a case to the PSC. There's two ways of doing a, a full-blown rate increase, you have to present all this information, um, and then they determine and present what you're asking to raise your rates, and they say yes or no, and a lot, it's more, more likely than not, they always say no, um, because the way they do it. But there's a simplified way of doing it where you just, it's a minimal amount, and then you can do, it's like a two percent increase. So depending on what we need that year, um, we do one or the other.
Any other questions? It's good to kind of go over these things, it's, we only do it once a year, so it's kind of nice. Um, page fifty-two, uh, relay water mains, um, these are water mains, we haven't had, um, cons, we haven't had a lot of breaks, but they're aging. We know that they're aging, every year we kind of move it down a little bit. Um, we haven't had any, uh, breaks this year in any of them, are we?
No, hydrogen flushing, usually we find the weak spots, and we've been pretty fortunate this last spring. Um, we haven't had really any issues. There's a couple of service leaks we found on, on Quietwood, but, um, they used to pop quite a bit, and we were all fixing them non-stop. It was like, they got to be Kristin Downs, Guernsey Meadows, Coventry, that whole area down in there, we've been having a lot of them, but we've been pretty fortunate. The fire department usually finds them too.
Yeah, well, we threw this in there, it was so many year, probably three or four years ago, just the history, all of a sudden we started having so many breaks that we're like, oh my gosh, we got to plan for this. And ever since we had that and we planned for it, we haven't had any breaks, so we've been fortunate. Um, and if we would ever do these projects, these, the road program would be done the same year that these projects are done. Just because if we cut open the road, we replace the water main, we're going to seal that road up right away, just FYI. So, moving on, uh, page fifty-three, this was the, the booster station that we always kind of planned for Hillendale and we're seeing. As we start seeing more development, possibly Kirtland coming down Martin, there might be other possibilities where this might go away or something might change. We're letting the development itself to kind of move things along a little bit, just to kind of give you an update. Page fifty-four, so, this is a big one, this is one that's new, that's coming up. So, eh, in our long-term water plan, as we grow, as Glenham, Meskigo, as we upgraded the water line and we see growth potential in that area, we're going to need a new water tower down i- in the south, kind of eastern part of the city. Um, our plan is to put one off of Old Loomis Road. Um, we're kind of working with the, the landowner right now, potentially, to see if this would be possible, just down the way. And then we just got our first cost in twenty-two, twenty-twenty-nine to show the design and construction. Um, growth down there is happening. Um, so, just to kind of like, this is our long-term plan of, of having the pressure that we need down in that area.
Questions?
It's a big cost, and it would be very similar to, that would be similar to the one that's right by our.
It'd be a two hundred and fifty thousand gallon, like industrial park.
Yeah, industrial park is the same one.
Yep.
And you, you guys factor in inflation with this?
We look at it, we will look at this and update this on a yearly basis.
So this is the cost right now?
Mm-hmm. And again, they throw contingency, they throw stuff in there. Again, engineers, we tend to be a little conservative, so.
Are you working with the landfill on location?
Yes, we were, that's who we are talking to. Moving on, we're now into sewer, page fifty-five. This is our private I and I program. Um, again, every year, it, it, we put in there, this is a footnote of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, we can get competitive funds and, and pull more money, um, as needed if we have projects. The second one is, the investigation started on Monday, it's in, um, Olaperson Deckers area. Um, and so they started doing the investigation and doing camera work, and we're checking out homes, so we've got about sixty-six homes in the, in the program this year. So, and it'll be a two-year process, twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. The next area that we're looking at is Jensen Lift Station, that area over there would be our next area to do it. If we do not spend these funds from MMSD, they will take it away from us.
So these are replacing the sewer laterals from the home to our connection. Um, we're replacing them fully, typically that would fall into homeowner's responsibility. Um, but because it falls into homeowner's responsibility, they're not really quick to fix them. So that's when we get all the extra, when it rain, we have a rain event or something like that, because they will have cracks and breaks in them, so they absorb the water, and then all the water goes through our sewer system, and we either can have backups, but we also pay for capacity, and it's using up some of our capacity that goes MMSD. So, um, MMSD wants to ha, have us more efficient, we want to be more efficient, so the best way to do it is just to tell the homeowner, we'll pay for it. And we get reimbursed from MMSD for those costs.
What we have found too is, by us covering all a hundred percent of the cost, and by replacing it, dig it up, do it, you get a couple more contractors that can do that work. The other thing too is our, we have about ninety to a hundred percent people sign up to do it. If we put some of the cost on the homeowners, like they do in other communities, you, you would get maybe fifty percent people sign up, just to let everyone know. That's kind of why we cover the entire cost. Moving on, page fifty-six, again, this is the other split of the sewer. So now again, crane truck, other truck, it's just the other side. I got to create one for water, I got to create one for sewer. Moving on, page fifty-seven, lift station upgrades. So, the first one, the twenty-twenty-five, if you remember last year, I said we needed to kind of look at McShane, uh, vault system. So McShane vault system is number one on here. So, um, you went to saw this last year, it was one of the last things I said that we had to go out there in camera, make sure that we do it. This is our big vault. Um, it holds one point eight, not the vault.
Almost two million.
Oh yeah, the vault that goes into.
That goes into McShane Lift Station.
Yeah, but this is like our main one, um, that we use. So we did all the camera work with visual.
No, they didn't finish it.
They had, got one left to do. So we, we added a lot in there, we had to do the vault for a hundred thousand, the gravity sewer pipe for fifty, and then PLC upgrades for thirty-five thousand. So, that would be going inside the vault, we, we bypass it, they clean it all out, um, and then make the repairs that they need to. Does it take two-thirds of our city?
Everything goes to this lift station before it goes MMSD. It's, it's our main lift station that we, that we, everything goes to it. So, it's crumbling, we had Sable come in, um, to do some other work last year, they noticed the concrete, it's, it's not invest, you know, it's in, there's a lot of hydrogen sulfide, so the concrete was starting to decay. Um, they recommend we should look into doing a lining of it. So now we're waiting for visual, so we're just a, um, camera, the sewer line that goes from the vault to the actual lift station, then it pumps MMSD. We, I don't know what that's going to be, but the vault we know was in poor shape. If something would happen to that, it could be, it'd be major. I mean, it's, it's not something you want, it's something that has to get done.
Questions, comments? Alright.
Moving on, uh, fifty-eight, the safety equipment, this is the other side, we just split it again, uh, of the thirty and the ten, so we're twenty thousand for the sewer utility. Um, page fifty-nine, we're back to splitting the SCADA radio network replacement. Again, it's just split in it between water and sewer utility, all the same numbers. Um, page sixty, new force main for the landfill. So, um, a couple of people took the landfill tour this year, and you saw the new cell. And the new cell, um, it's quite big, and that's, new cell is only going to hold another year, year and a half of garbage. As the landfill grows, and that's the next cell, the feasibility study's in, and they think that they'll get their feasibility study passed in November of this year, which means then they will allow to be growing more west. As the landfill grows, there's going to be more leachate. We right now have a four-inch force main, and we have done everything we have, we can. We have upgraded the propellers, the pumps, everything that we have, but we are getting close to be at that limit. So this would be a new six-inch line that would go from where our lift station is, all the way to the Ryan Creek interceptor, um, and then dump out there. So.
And you think it will be able to last till twenty-twenty-eight before we need to do that?
I wish we could push it up, honestly.
They did get a holding tank.
Yeah.
Now, again, they put a hundred, they put a huge holding tank out there, just FYI. They're not taking liquid waste right now, which is good. Um, but the thing that varies is this, it all depends on contracts and how much garbage they get, okay? They win the contract from Brookfield, they had a, a record year last year for, for tonnage. Right now, they don't have that record year right now, you won't see as much. But, as we start getting other contracts, as maybe the place across the street starts closing up, they only have so much left to go, ours has more potential for growing larger, that we are monitoring this, and this might have to move up. But for right now, we're looking at twenty-twenty-eight, and the reason why they don't want to give us too much leachate is, if they give us more leachate, we have to charge them more rec charges. So they are using that holding tank, and they are trying with them to not give it all to us at once, but to give it in just more of a, kind of like steady flow, instead of all at, at right away.
They're rationing, they're rationing to discharge.
Yeah. So, that's why we're, but we're monitoring this pretty good. This one might have to move up. And if anyone did not take the tour, it's, it's pretty good to go see, and see the size of a new cell, and to see that the amount of left, land that they have left just in the top, there's not much left for the garbage up there until they get this new cell born.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
Amazing, when you see how fast that great big hole fills up.
And that cell will be finished, they say, a year, year and a half, I think Dan said.
Right. And they don't just dump the garbage in there, they compact it down, I mean, they take like ten cubic feet and get it down to one cubic foot by the time they're done compacting it, it's crazy. Is that it?
That's, that's all I have. Um, there is, I think we did the road program account, and that's all I have.
Thanks Scott, thanks Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks Tim, thanks Scott. Alright, uh, under Communications Miscellaneous Business, as authorized by law, I just want to mention that August thirteenth is a scheduled council meeting, but we have the election that day, so we're going to be canceling that meeting, because there's an election that day. Um, otherwise, if you have any questions at all on any part of the budget process, feel free to reach out to either department head directly on what the item is, or Sharon or myself, and we will get you your answers, or, um, you know, do the best we can to, um, explain, you know, what the request is for and how it's being paid for. So, with that being said, um, any other communications or miscellaneous?
Well, I was going to say, when is the next cow?
Um, I don't have the planning schedule, you were emailed a, um, schedule, it's in August.
It's in August?
Yeah, but I can send, I can resend that to.
Last one then, because there's no August thirteenth, it's supposed to be August twenty-seventh?
Yeah. Septe, what?
September?
Oh, I'm sorry, September.
It's in September now, okay, so there is no, okay.
Any other questions? Otherwise, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I just wanted to request.
Sure.
For the next cow to, because I kind of thought it was going to be on this one, was, um, the old police station?
We, we discussed that, we're not going to bring it back until we have an answer on that grant.
I would, I want to see everything about the grant, and I don't.
We sent you everything.
No, I know, but has everybody seen it?
Um, did I, did I send it there? Otherwise, I can send, it's a one-page thing, it doesn't really go that much, but once we have all the information, then we can have a discussion, but we don't know anything at this point.
Because I kind of feel like putting the cart before the horse a little bit with applying for a grant, when we had more council members, like Rob said at the last cow, it would have gotten voted down, it was four to three.
No, it wasn't, it was a discussion, and bringing back four million dollars, I think if we were to get that would change the discussion.
I don't, I don't know.
Agenda, so we can bring it back.
Okay, we, we, yeah, yeah, we won't discuss it, but I would like to see it on the next cow.
Yeah, and I think you're.
I'll put it on if we have it on the next thing, otherwise we're going to waste.
What did you say, Rob?
I, I, and I think you're on to something, because we're setting, we're setting a new precedent.
Guys, we don't have this on the agenda, I can put it on for discussion at that point.
Can we put it on for the next cow, please?
I can, but it's, like I said, it depends where it's at, for, if we're really long but, on, long on budget that night, and we don't have the information, I'll put it on there, but I.
Well, I would like it on there, I would like it on there. I'm requesting it formally to be on there, with all the information on the grant that you're applying for.
You have all the information already.
For everybody.
I'm not hiding from everybody, but I'm saying you have it already, so I can send it out to everyone else. Alright, I need a motion to adjourn. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. We're adjourned at eight twenty-three.